Man?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Crist?
Present.
Mayor Chair Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum.
And we have Mr. Vos, present.
Yay!
We didn't, we didn't know if you were gonna ever be here again. We're glad to see you.
It's an anniversary.
You lost weight?
No.
It's the beard.
Cover up all of sins.
You look much better with it. Looks, doesn't he look distinguished? Let's have a vote. How many people like the beard? Okay. How many don't? Everybody loves it.
That's right.
All right. Ms. Devoe?
Call to order the Housing Authority meeting. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call. Authority Member Harvey?
Present.
Man?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Crist?
Present.
Chair Zetto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, the invocation is Pastor Ryan Perry from New Hope Community Church.
God our Father, we know that you reign on high over heaven and earth, that you rule over all things, you rule over this city. We thank you that you have brought these leaders to us to rule in your place, and tonight they need your wisdom. Tonight they depend on you because you see things like no one else can and you understand them completely. God, we're asking you as the citizens of this city to work through these leaders, to be just, to be wise, fair, to be cooperative with each other, and to think for the best of the citizens they represent. So God, we call on you to do what only you can do in their hearts and minds. Give them peace in the decisions they make with good conscience. Lord, we pray you will bless them richly for the service they offer us, and we give them our respect as you've commanded us to do. All of this, we thank you for, as we wait on you to do it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Please place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation in the name of God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, City Manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm turning the media over to Ms. Devoe for the Housing Authority.
Do we have a motion and a second for the adoption of the Housing Authority regular meeting minutes of December 11, 2012?
So moved.
Second.
The meetings are approved. We'll turn the meeting back to Mayor Paris.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to adopt the minutes.
Second.
Okay. I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstained.
Well, that's right, you have to. Let the record reflect that Councilman Smith is abstained. The consent calendar, we gotta remove CC5. Is there anything else to be removed? Any speaker?
I, we have speaker cards on CC4.
Okay, let's pull CC4 out.
Right. Mayor, Mayor Paris, I'd like the record to reflect on, my intention is to abstain on CC5 because I've got a conflict on property in the immediate area.
Okay, are you recusing yourself or abstaining?
We also need to remove CC2.
Then you have to leave, okay.
And I need to recuse myself from CC5 off some property there.
All right. I'm kicking you both out.
Okay.
You wanna take the vote on the?
Well, let's do 5 first.
Okay.
Okay, and then I'll bring you back in, okay?
And Mayor Paris, we need to, we have the speaker card on CC2 also.
Okay, we're gonna pull off CC2, CC4, and CC5. Let's do CC, well, let's do, yeah, you're right, let's do the consent calendar first. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, now, if you could take off on CC5, we'll get that out of the way. Are there cards on CC5?
Not on CC5. CC2 and rest of CC4. Motion to approve CC5?
Second.
Let's vote. Okay, unanimous with two people recusing themselves. All right, let's do CC2. Mr. Pecker? No. Peckler? Pelka? Your A looks like an R. Okay.
Well, nothing to write on over here, it's kinda hard to do that. Looking over the check register, I find a couple things that were rather interesting to me. One was the check written at Davis Communications for $2,878.76 for the leaps presentation booklets that apparently the city paid for, for a individual company that the city does not own. So I don't know why the city paid for these presentation booklets for their little demonstration they had a few weeks ago that the media wasn't invited to. And the second thing was a check here for $975 paid to the Lancaster Performing Arts Center, club membership for Frank Visco. I don't know why the city's paying 975 bucks for Frank Visco's club membership into the Performing Arts Center.
I wanna know too, I'll find out.
Yeah, I'd like, you know, who authorized that?
It's likely either, it deals with the LPAC Mayor's Gold Club that I believe Mr. Visco and a hundred other people are members to, and it's likely either a reimbursement or some other way. But we can find out, and Mr. Pelka knows we're always available if he wants to come to City Hall and he can view all of the information on the check register. Okay, I wanna know too, let me know.
Yeah.
I wanna know too, let me know. Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Pelka.
Motion to approve CC2?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, now, CC4.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Once again, I stand before this council, who was elected to serve the people, on behalf of the citizens, not only of Lancaster, but the entire Antelope Valley, the students, the parents, the teachers, and administration of Quartz Hill High School, and other local schools, on behalf of the hundreds of people who have spoken out against this project, we are here once again to be on the record to say, we disagree with this project, we ask you once again to use your common sense and the God-given gifts that the pastor here just mentioned. Use your good consciousness, use your common sense, don't approve this zone change, don't approve this project. We know this falls on deaf ears, we've been saying this for six years, we just need it on the record once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Reeves?
Excuse me, Mayor Paris, Council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. Last time I spoke about the Walmart project, I spoke about a park, a woodlands, across from Quartz Hill High School to mitigate the air pollution and the light pollution from the Walmart Center. I believe that a hundred wide woodlands in the parking lot could be zoned for recreation use. The length of the park would extend the whole block. This is the compromise. We're gonna build the Walmart, and they can, they can complain about it, and I'm sorry, but we need the revenue for the city. But we can mitigate this situation and try to be friendly to the people of Quartz Hill by creating a parkland or woodland across from the high school that will mitigate the light and the pollution from Walmart. This is a compromise, no one gets what they want entirely, the developer doesn't get all the land he wants, and Quartz Hill doesn't get to stop the project. So I would appreciate if the council would put this on hold, let the developer come back with a plan to create a woodlands or a park across from the high school to mitigate their concerns. And I think in, in the long term, the people of Quartz Hill are upset about it now, but they will appreciate the jobs and, and the businesses that the center will bring. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
This is actually the first time I've actually come up and addressed anybody up here, so. I believe you guys mean well for the city of Lancaster, and I just, I just, well, I just personally think that it wouldn't be a good idea to have commercial property straight across from our high school. It's, it, it just, would seem to attract too much bad attention, I guess. But I wish I had more to really say on such, but I guess that's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Andrew Nieto?
It's been a couple of years, so, my last name is a Spanish pronunciation, Nieto. I like to think of it as Nieto.
That's very good.
So I'm here to speak on the rezoning of the property across the street from Quartz Hill High School, from residential to commercial. I speak on more of the intangible aspects of it. When I was a student at Quartz Hill High School, I had the privilege of being able to run cross-country, and it's a wonderful area to go running in. There's just something about the scent of the dust that comes off the ground as your feet hit it out there. I quite appreciated that. Looked forward to running every day. And it is, when you, when you have such sensory experiences, you, you grow to know an area better than you otherwise would. And I grew to know Quartz Hill and love it. I feel like even, I feel like that area has an identity to it, a feeling, as I just described, intangible to it. And having seen over the years the increased development in the area, I have to admit I've missed a lot of the open spaces. I'm pleased at the open spaces that are still there, but there's just something intangible about the open space that's right across the street. I've gone there as a photographer and taken pictures during the wildflower season. It's quite a great view. Now, I'm not necessarily going to speak out against the loss of that view. I understand the realities that the world changes and population growth happens. But I have noticed, from the experiences that I had running cross-country and taking in such strong sensory experiences, that there just, there's something about residential development in that area that takes away less of that atmosphere than a commercial project would. I envision in my mind, I'm pretty good at visualizing things, I envision in my mind a project of a commercial nature, and there's absolutely nothing there, nothing that's compatible with what I knew running cross-country during those years. I don't feel as much of a loss in the times that I've gone back to that area to go running in the residential neighborhoods that are there. There should be commercial projects there. We have the residential projects, they're far away from any sort of shopping that really a neighborhood would need. I just feel like there's so many places in that area within a couple miles that would be so much better for a commercial development and keep that intangible spirit intact.
I find it rather interesting that a month ago, when everybody was gathered here giving their testimony on the Quartz Hill Walmart, you, Mr. Paris, have the audacity to say that Palmdale was gonna steal the Walmart from Lancaster if you didn't build it in Lancaster. Well, apparently, there is, has not been a discussion with the city of Palmdale for the, over the last five years on this project, so I would like to know from you.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Pelka, could you, could you, could you start his time over? Could you start over? I was interrupted and I didn't get the opportunity to hear you.
I said, apparently, from the discussion a month ago, you had mentioned that the city of Palmdale was gonna steal the Walmart from Lancaster if Lancaster didn't build it. Apparently, there hasn't been any discussion-
Summary, but yeah, essentially, that's what I said.
Huh?
I mean, you're summarizing what I said, but essentially, that's what I said.
Yeah, well, there hasn't been any discussion with Walmart in the last five years over building the Walmart in Palmdale. So I was gonna why you're lying to everybody.
Oh, why I'm lying to everyone?
Yeah, why you're lying to everybody.
Okay. Well, so much for listening to Mr. Pelka.
Well, no, can you answer the question?
You know, Mr. Pelka, I'm not gonna put up with this. You got something to say, say it. You're not here to cross the damn and me.
I just said it.
You're not here to make an answer yourself. I mean, just, just do what you gotta do.
It's factual. It's factual. Where, in your documentation, you show-
Okay, let me, let me explain to you.
The city Walmart in the last, I'll give you four years.
No, let's go with the five.
Okay.
Let's go with what you started with, all right? This project is over five years old, okay? I have been mayor almost five years. Your, your buddy at Sil, no, no, you asked a question.
It was not built in Lancaster.
You asked a question, you're getting an answer. All right, sit down.
You said if it was not built in Lancaster, Palmdale was gonna build it. Palmdale's not-
Mr. Pelka, if you're not gonna let me talk, why, what is it, this, the Pelka Show? Is that why you're up here? In answer to Mr. Pelka's question, this, this project is over seven years old, and when it was initially planned, there was a discussion with Palmdale, wasn't there? And that is the developer. And the developer had that discussion with Palmdale about doing it right over the, the city line in Palmdale. Can, can you ask the developer to come up? Yeah, why don't you come up and let's, let's, let's deal with this. The, you know, I don't know why I get sucked into listening to these people for two minutes. I mean, it is so ludicrous. Could you just address the, the portion which he asserted?
Sure. My name is Stan Rothbard, I'm the president of Rothbard Development Corporation. We're the developer and applicant of, of the project in Quartz Hill. I don't remember the exact timeframe, but it was six to seven years ago when I, I developed or worked with Walmart on all the Walmarts in the Antelope Valley. And met with Walmart to see whether there was room for an additional store. We looked at the west side and saw that it was underserved and felt that there was a need to put another store on the west side. We met with the city of Palmdale to discuss their appetite for us going in the city of Palmdale. They were certainly supportive and encouraged us. We then identified the site at 60th and L, met with the city of Lancaster, and the rest is history. We preferred the site in Lancaster. We thought it was, it was better situated to attract the entire west side demographic. And here we are, seven years later, trying to get our project approved.
Thank you, Mr. Rothbard. And we're listening to questions that are carefully phrased in the last five years. Palmdale knew exactly what they did. Palmdale knows for an absolute certainty they were in discussions with Mr. Rothbard about building it in Palmdale, and now they wanna walk away from that. It's just not true. The reason is, we're having to approve this is precisely for what I just told you. It was either Palmdale or it was Lancaster, and both were going to impact Quartz Hill. Now, Ed Galindo, I enjoyed hearing from you this morning.
Your Honor? Gentlemen and ladies of the jury. First of all, I wanna thank you, Mayor, for being on Cafe Coletti this morning. It was a good program, and I think you met, you met some of the people out there. Mr. Bozicki, I wanna thank you also for being there. My wife also sent her things. This, this zone change that we're talking about now, I live right on L, right on L and 47. And I think I came up here last time and talked about the traffic that's coming here. Yesterday, I found out in the Antelope Valley Times, the Antelope Valley Press, that they're going to widen that street. And I came here into the valley here about 20 years ago. I had a house, I first came up here and bought a house up in, around J and East, East 20th. Walmart came in and built something there. I then bought another house in, was on the east side also, and another store came in there. So I figured, well, let's go out to Quartz Hill and see if we can find something over there. So we did. We went to Quartz Hill and got ourselves a little two and a half acre, a little place there, and building up really great. And here comes Walmart again. I'm, I think, the zoning is one thing that I, I'm really not that interested in. I just don't particularly care to have the Walmart across the street from the high school and that close to my house. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Galindo. Okay, that concludes the speaker cards. And Mr. Rothbard, thank you for clarifying that situation. Is there a motion?
First of all, is there any discussion?
I'll move we approve CC4.
A second.
It's unanimous. Now, will you build the thing and get this off my plate, please? Okay, moving on to PH1. Any speaker cards? Okay, so Elizabeth Brubaker?
Good evening, Mayor, Paris, and City Council members. We are conducting a temporary hearing tonight for the approval of a multifamily housing revenue bonds not to exceed $8 million to assist in the financing of the rehabilitation of Cedar Ridge, an existing 110-unit multifamily affordable housing complex located at 2105 East Avenue J8 in the city of Lancaster. The property owner plans to create an outdoor community space with a playground and artificial turf play lawn. Upgrade the building envelope by installing new thermal foam roofs and retrofitted vinyl windows, and replace all the heating, ventilation, air conditioning systems with new equipment. Thirty-five percent of the units will be designed for first five LA program participants, which are families with children up to five years of age who have some, some contact with Department of Children and Family Services and are at risk of homelessness. The property owner is partnering, partnering with a nonprofit to provide supportive and social services for these families while enrolled in the program. The property owner is requesting that the city approve the issuance of tax-exempt revenue bonds to be utilized to finance the Cedar Ridge project. The bonds will be tax-exempt private activity bonds for the purposes of the Internal Revenue Code, and as such, require the approval of the elected body of the governmental entity having jurisdiction over the area where the project to be financed is located. The city will not be under any obligation to repay the bond indebtedness. Please adopt Resolution Number 1301 approving the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds by the city of Lancaster in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8 million to assist in the financing of the rehabilitation of Cedar Ridge in the city of Lancaster.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Reeves?
Mayor, Paris, Council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. I oppose the issuance of bonds. The participation of the city in this venture is unclear. That's not true, after listening to Liz, but it is clear. We're gonna be issuing $8 million worth of bonds that are gonna be tax exempt, so someone that is wealthy can buy some tax exempt bonds. And if somebody wants to develop something, they should do it on their own. I have another objection to this. I find the name of the company offensive and a dig at the Christian religion. It's almost heretic. You know, Almighty God said, "I am what I am," and they play on this on their title of their business, "I am what I am." And I find that I want to say as a Christian and a believer in Judeo-Christian comments, that I find that the name of that business is offensive and that the city is doing a business with a concern that would even attempt something like that. Thank you.
I was just advised that that's what Popeye said in the cartoon, is, "I am what I am." Okay. It wasn't meant, I don't think it was meant to offend anyone. You know, this particular project I'm aware of and familiar with, and it, it, it actually was the culmination of a lot of people's efforts to readdress how we're dealing with this particular population in a way that is going to be more creative and, I think, more uplifting and with some intelligence behind it, rather than just doing it the way we always have done it. And for, for what it's worth, I, of, of all the projects we've done, I think this is one of those that have the, the potential for redefining how we treat a certain segment of our population that is mistreated under the current state of affairs, I think is the only way to say it, for what that's worth. And I'm sorry you find the name offensive. I found it kinda ridiculous myself, but, you know, it, I mean, I don't know how you get funding with a name like that, but, but I guess they do. Motion to approve PH1?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It passes unanimously. Okay, PH2, any cards?
Speaker cards?
Way of reading. Is there a motion?
I motion we adopt Resolution Number 13-02.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote. PH3, we have one speaker card.
And if I may, Mayor, I need to recuse myself.
You have to recuse yourself.
Yeah, I own the Pioneer Bank Center.
Okay, go to your room. Ed Kelvin, are you doing this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. It's been a couple of years since the adoption of the, or creation of the Destination Lancaster group. That's a group that is a partnership with the city of Lancaster, the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds, and the hospitality industry. And one of their main things that they were attempting to do is to create Lancaster and the Antelope Valley as a destination point to attract more visitors into town and increase the overnight stays in our local hotels. And with the limited funding back then, they had been able to create a website, and they've done a couple of, a calendar available for people to view and look at to see what's available here in the Antelope Valley. But was, what was recognized that there needs to be an additional funding source, a greater funding source, if this is to, to be successful as far as a marketing program for Destination Lancaster. And one of the things that the, the board there determined was the best way to do that, it was to create a tourism business improvement district. And that was led by the hotel industry and the, and the hotel operators here in the Antelope Valley. So they got together and started talking about putting together and forming the, what's called a T-bid, and started to develop a management district plan that would create such a funding mechanism for a marketing program for Destination Lancaster. And we've been going through this process the last couple of months. It's a process that involves three meetings. This is a third of those three meetings with this public- This is a third of those three meetings with this public hearing to adopt a resolution to form that T-bid. The hotels that would be qualified for that are any hotel that exceed $500,000 in the annual sales and have at least a $50 average daily room rate. Through that, we've identified seven hotels that meet that. And of those seven hotels, six have actually petitioned back in November the City Council to form this T-bid. And we've been going through that public process and we've been hearing back from the hotels. And as many people are aware of, the economy, things like the, and things that affect that like the fiscal cliff, that there's been some concerns about, you know, how the hotels, because of the federal contracts are out there, are going to sustain their occupancy rates. So one of the things that they, while they want to go forward with this T-bid, they do have concerns about the economy and how that impacts their rates. And they've asked us to come back to you as part of, and to look at an amendment to the management district plan that allows them to, during the annual protest period, to allow up to 30% of those who are assessed to protest the T-bid. The management district plan that you have before you now says 40%, and they're requesting that that be reduced to 30% to give them a little bit more leeway in the event that their revenues generated from this T-bid are not coming the way they would like to. But we're here to talk about the T-bid and how that's actually going to be successful in generating more room nights for the hotels and promoting the city of Lancaster and the Antelope Valley. And I'd like to introduce Luis Garabe, who's the staff member who will be working with Destination Lancaster to make this T-bid a success. And he'll go over some of the programs that this will create.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff has had ongoing conversations with the hoteliers and the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds regarding the development of this management district plan and also the T-bid. And everyone's really excited about the potential that this new collaboration can present. You know, the Antelope Valley has some great assets that we as locals often take advantage of, things like the California Poppy Reserve, Willow Springs Raceway, Antelope Valley Fair, Edwards Air Force Base, the new MOA, just to name a few. Now, one of the primary goals of this new T-bid will be to increase the marketing efforts to help promote these great area attractions and existing special events to those outside of the region. And through tools like the Destination Lancaster website and other programs identified in our marketing plan, we can help potential visitors find exciting things to do here in the valley. While government and business travel, as Kelvin mentioned, is currently fairly strong here in the valley, we recognize the need to diversify the local tourism market. And together, we've already begun to explore some of the different things like business conventions, trade shows, sporting events, new sports tourism programs that will help us diversify our tourism marketing mix even further. Through this T-bid, the hoteliers will now have an opportunity to aggressively go after these new business opportunities that they may now have previously had the opportunity to do because of lack of manpower, time, or funding. As partners in this, the city and the fairgrounds will be assisting the T-bid by lending our expertise in marketing, social media, business attraction, and special event coordination. This will help ensure that, if approved tonight, that this new program can hit the ground running. While the majority of the T-bid funds will be used for external marketing programs, the hotels express their interest to set aside funds for other types of programs, too. This includes special promotional programs and package deals that the hotels can use to help lure visitors or to enhance their experience once they're here. These promotional programs will also allow other businesses and area attractions to become involved with Destination Lancaster and together strengthen our collective marketing efforts to promote this valley. With your approval tonight, we will finalize this T-bid formation process and can begin its implementation. And per the management district plan in front of you, this new assessment would take place effective February 1st, 2013. Therefore, staff recommends that council approve the T-bid with the 30% amendment assessment that Kelvin talked about earlier. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Luis, I have one. Why isn't the chamber involved?
They will be involved. Through Destination Lancaster, we needed kind of a starting point. And the three main partners right now are the fairgrounds, the city, and the local hotels. The goal is to get it going and then from there, develop more partnerships with other organizations like the chamber, local restaurants, area attractions, and things like that.
Yeah, it seems to me that we could be working with the chamber a lot more than we are. I mean, is that your impression, too?
Absolutely. There's always opportunity to improve.
Okay. We should spend some energy in that, all right? Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, we have one speaker card. Mr. Reeves.
Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I oppose the formation of the Lancaster Tourism Business Improvement District at this time. Before we address the concerns of lack of tourism, we should address the infrastructure of the city that supports tourism. We have a business district which doesn't offer any real opportunities for tourists. There are no shops where one can buy real items, like why can't we have a Tiffany? Why can't we have a J. Crew? Why can't we have a Banana Republic? Stores that people shop at and withdraw people. Also, as I mentioned many times up here about the transportation in this city, and we've discussed it, the vice mayor and councilman Mann, who serviced on the AVTA board, I believe that the transportation in this city is not functional. I think we need shuttle buses to make it easy for tourists to get around. I wish that the AVTA would try one shuttle bus line, try it out and see if it would work, because a tourist isn't going to wait out in the cold or rain here for a bus. As of now, the buses are almost empty. They have certain lines that have capacity, but most of the buses in this town are empty. Why don't we have shuttle buses that people can get around on?
Mr. Reeves, are you aware that the AVTA does do that? They do it with, for example, the Poppy Festival? They bring people in via the trains, they shuttle them back and forth to the poppies? They do all that kind of stuff when we have our larger events?
Well, we need to do it. We need to have a shuttle service like they have down below in conjunction with the regular service. I mean...
I think what you're referring to is the dash buses. Is that right?
Yeah, right. Exactly, exactly, Mayor Paris. The dash, for example, on Fairfax Avenue down below, you know, that's Hollywood all the way down to Wilshire. They have the regular buses and they have the shuttle buses.
Yeah, they're called the dash line. It works very well, yeah. I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, so, you know, that's my, you know, we want to have something down here that, you know, come down here and spend their money like J. Crew and other stores, and we want to have a way for them to get around so we don't have to hire outside vendors to transport them. Otherwise, you know, it's a great idea. We have a beautiful area here. This is fantastic. Look at the mountains and the air here. It can be a really nice tourist attraction for people, particularly in the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I address a couple of things? We do do a couple of different events, you know, with the shuttle buses, and we do have to bid it out. AVTA is an entity on its own, as it's a JPA partnership with the city of Lancaster, the county, and Palmdale. But when we bid it out to do a service with the hotels and that, it came out where it's actually cheaper to use private individuals to do that at this time. So we do look at that. We do, and I think this is a perfect example of, we're trying everything that's out there that's possible to do. So it's not that we're not trying, it's not that we're not looking at different things. I think this is a perfect example of, we're trying to let the community get involved and to tell us what they need. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Comment, if I could, please, first.
Go ahead, comment.
Yeah. You know, this, unlike a transient occupancy tax that goes to the city coffers to be used for whatever we want, there's 100% of agreement with the people that are going to be affected that are going to participate in this. And this money goes into a pot that they use to actually bring more business here to Antelope Valley. So this is something that we talked about years ago to get started, and it's just the right way, the right way to do it. And it'll generate more money, hopefully, for the city and also for the hotels. So it's a good, it's a good thing.
Good comment, I think.
All good?
Yeah, I think Councilman Smith hit it right on the nose. This is, if everybody listened closely, this is a direct marketing benefit back to those hotels that obviously we derive some income from. But again, this is solely based around the minimum requirements that was stated in the presentation, and I think this is a win. And again, like the vice mayor said, this is the things that we should be doing, especially in these times, is working closely with these business entities to support them. So with that.
Thank you. Motion to approve PH3?
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Could you bring Senator Beck?
She probably really did think she was in her room.
How do you feel, points? Okay, JNB1, any speaker cards?
No.
Let's wave the reading. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 13-03 and adopt Resolution SA01-13.
Can we take those concurrently? Mr. McCune, can we?
I'll second that, then.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, moving on to the council agenda. We're getting ready to mix up the commissions. I was on a radio program today, and it was asked, why aren't there more ethnic minorities in these commissions? And the answer is, you have to apply. So where's Ed? Ed? Mr. Galindo? I'm expecting an application. I would like to see greater diversity on these commissions, but it does require people to submit applications. And it does, it does require qualified people to do it, and it's an incredibly time-consuming problem as, or commitment, I guess we should say, as people in the audience will tell you. But nonetheless, if we're going to have a vibrant city, it requires people to make that commitment. So hopefully, within the next two weeks, I'll get some more applications. Thank you. No action on the financing authority, no action on the power authority, no act of city manager. Any announcements?
Yes, sir, too. The mayor and I had the pleasure of attending the expansion of Barone's on the Boulevard today. I totally butchered the names of the owners, so I want to make amends for that and congratulate Jean and Diane Magar, John Magar, and Dan Edwards for bringing Barone's expanding to the Boulevard, adding another 15 jobs. And Barone's is an AV institution, and we invite everyone to come and rediscover. Second announcement is, I'm pleased to announce that our winter softball leagues had a record of 144 teams signed up. If anyone's ever played softball in the Antelope Valley in the winter, that's amazing that you would get that many. And I want to compliment Jeff Campbell and John Sanders for running one of the biggest and best-run leagues in all of Southern California. That's a big testament. It's 144 teams of 14 to 16 people each playing softball at our park. Impressive.
Shows we're exercising, too.
What?
Shows that we're exercising.
That's right. Throughout, they're exercising.
Yep.
We got to have some kind of citywide weight loss contest. I guess Parks and Recreation should do that, shouldn't you? Okay, good. We should work on that. And I can think of some people in the room that might sign up. Wherever it fits.
Me.
Or doesn't. That's right. Might even, might even fit on a few people up here.
He didn't look at me, dude. Was he looking at Ken?
I was looking at Kitty. All right. Okay, city clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible so that, if necessary, the council, city manager, and city staff will be able to contact you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Excuse me. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting, and we do appreciate your cooperation. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. So I see Mr. Pelka's name's here. Any chance he's going to come up here and apologize for calling me a liar now that we clarified that? Fifty-fifty? Well, why don't you do the speaker cards so we don't have to take a break, and I'll be right back.
Rather interesting when the heat starts building in the room, Mr. Paris takes the powder. Looking over the items on the agenda here that are possibly being discussed in closed session, I don't know whether they will or not. Doe versus Lancaster, case unknown. Palmdale versus Lancaster. Lancaster versus the Housing Authority of the County of Los Angeles. The Antelope Valley Allied Arts versus Lancaster. Rubin versus Lancaster. Miracle Star Network, Miracle Star Women's Recovery Community versus the city of Lancaster. See if our neighborhood group versus the city of Lancaster. Other past lawsuits. Mongols versus Lancaster. TCAL versus Lancaster. I can go on and on and on. And I noticed today in the check register, there was a payout to somebody for a lawsuit, apparently for $18,000. Didn't recognize the person's name. But I have to wonder, by looking at all these lawsuits that we have against the city, what's this costing us? What is this costing us in not only lawyers from his law firm, but other law firms that have been acquired by the city to deal with all these lawsuits? And how much is going out in payouts? Apparently, some of these things are not disclosed because of privacy concerns or whatever, you know, for the payouts and stuff like that. How much is all this stuff actually costing us? I mean, it's got to be millions and millions here, you know? I don't know why, you know, it's never been brought up or anything else, but, I mean, just looking at the closed session stuff here, I don't know what's being discussed in the closed session area. Not much is really mentioned afterwards, you know? But I mean, really, how many millions is this city paying out because of lawsuits? And I'm sure a lot of them are because of the, you know, the, how shall we say, lucid mouth of certain people, or I should say, the majority of one person sitting up there at the council. So that's my question. I'll probably be going to the city clerk's office tomorrow requesting all that information, how much all the payouts have been in the last five years, money, et cetera, so.
Thank you, Mr. Pelka. Dan Solmester.
I've got a question about some of the, I work for one of the public utilities, as some of you probably know. So I'm out here in the area quite a bit every day and been noticing more and more, we've got a lot of burned-out buildings sitting around here. One house in particular, where unfortunately, somebody lost their life or a couple lost their life. Off of Jackman and 12th Street West, that building's been sitting there, burned out for probably close to two years. That building's been sitting there, burned out for probably close to two years now. And then the Wendy's over here, that's a real eyesore. I'd love them to come back, you know? I like the chili, but, you know, that, that building's been sitting there for over a year now. And kind of wondering what the deal is, how long, how much longer that's going to sit there. It is really kind of an eyesore. Doesn't, doesn't add to the beauty of the city. And then one other thing that I did not put on there, could we get maybe an app that we could put along with what was like the graffiti app, maybe for some of the potholes and where the streets are starting to come apart? My neighborhood over here is, is getting terrible. I mean, we're, you know, you come around the corner one morning, and it seems as the weather gets worse, the water gets into the street, then it freezes overnight, and it just percolates that asphalt out of there. And I know the crews can't keep up with it. We just need to restart repaving, you know, so.
I like the idea of the app. And why isn't the Wendy's abated? Some, some businesses and residence stuff, as they go through insurance claims and stuff, they don't do it until they get their insurance. I don't know if the Wendy's I know was that case. We'll find out what's going to happen with that. But a lot of times, you wait till the insurance settlement's there, then they'll either decide to rebuild. But we can find out for sure. And in terms of the app, we would hope to propose something, you and I have discussed that, and we would hope to propose something to you in the budget. We're working on that for next year.
And also have the, I want Maintenance to look at the areas talking about, so get that, I mean, get the expansive street we're talking about, and I want that done next week, okay? On the, on the buildings, on the burned-out buildings, I mean, I don't know why we're waiting for the landlords. We should just go out and take it down and build the, build the insurance company.
Well.
I mean, we give them 30 days, and if they don't do it, let's just take it out.
I'd like to look at the specific ones and see where they're at and what we're doing with the owners, because we also do give notices of violation for the owners to fix it, and if they don't, then we can lien the property.
Okay. I mean, I don't think the owner cares if, I mean, it's an insurance company issue. I mean, anyway, look into it, would you? Robert Lenz.
It's Robert Long, actually. I guess I miswrote it. My writing is horrible.
Sorry.
Anyway, Mr. Mayor, Council, how you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
Doing all right. I'm, I'm speaking on CC4, but I didn't submit my card in, in time, and I just have some concerns with it. I, for one, I'm a substitute teacher, a roving sub actually with the Antelope Valley Union High School District, and I, I work over at Highland High School. And one of the things that, that seems to benefit Highland a lot is that it's in a completely residential area. And the nearest anything is about a mile away, and that would be the shopping center up on 30th and, 30th West and Avenue P. My concern is with, with building a major shopping complex so close to Quartzville High School is, one, what will it do with the kids, for the education of the kids there? A lot of kids will probably be tempted to go over and, not, not just to ditch school and hang out in the shopping center, but also harass the people that are working over there. And we all know teenagers, they like to get into trouble. So that could create some problem for the businesses that are going to go in there, but also, in addition, it would create some problem for the, for the high schools, too, as, as some of the kids will stop getting the quality of education because they'll be ditching all the time. And what kind of security measures could we possibly take to keep the kids in school during the school hours, while, while at the same time protecting those that are in, that are, that are running the businesses and the shopping centers? Do you have, do you have any idea?
Well, I, I think those are assumptions, you know, that, that it somehow attracts kids into, into cutting school. There, there doesn't seem to be any, any research that supports that. Now, when I was in high school, I had the record for the most cuts of anybody in the entire school system. And I don't think that the stores are the attractant for that. Now, things may have changed in the last 45 years, but there's nothing to support that. I, I can also tell you that, you know, what we're looking at in, in urban development is putting schools and commercial and business together. There's a lot of benefits that arise from that. It's just different. You know, it's not what we're used to. It also is a, is a better overall land use, and it creates situations where you have much more walkability in your community. Now, it does require some design considerations, but of all the, the, the concerns about the Walmart, quite frankly, the one I found least persuasive was that you're putting commercial in a school together. Because from all the studies we're seeing globally, I mean, globally, that is really the best use. You know, the other thing we're looking at is what we did downtown, sharing the parks with the, the private schools. Really ought to be something we're doing with public schools. You know, it's, it's a shared use type thing. It's, it's better land use, and in these times of where we don't have unlimited budgets, it's almost essential. Now, like I said before, I, I, there's a lot of reasons why I wish we weren't building more Walmarts. But you know, the, the thing people don't seem to understand is our, our choices as a community is we can buy the land, you know, we can find a way to buy it, float a bond, do something to buy it, and leave it alone. But absent that, it's not for us to decide how people use it, if it fits within the general plan and the general, general overall usage of what we envision, envision. You know, it's, it's an interesting question as to, to what's going on. But it, it occurs to me that the same people that really love the idea of the high-speed rail, well, those are the decisions that open up hundreds of thousands of people moving into an area. You know, if you really wanted to keep the Antelope Valley rule, we never should have built the freeway. I mean, it really is that far that you have to plan ahead. What is the effect of having a freeway? Well, I remember when I was a kid and it was being built, everybody was all excited. It wasn't going to take us three hours to get to LA. And they were right. It didn't. And now it takes people in LA only an hour to move here. You know, I mean, it's, it has, the, the decision is, has to happen far, far earlier than the Walmart, you know? And I also, on the radio, I was saying today, I'm a little bit surprised that nobody's complaining about Target. I mean, Mr. Mann brought that up. It's a bigger shopping center. And I, and I have to wonder, is it the demographic that uses Walmart that people are really objecting to? Because otherwise, why aren't they complaining about Target, which does appeal to a different demographic? And we all, you know, when I say demographic, I'm talking race. And, and nobody really wants to confront that issue. But I would have been a lot more happier if the argument would have been against both stores instead of just the one. Because it, it's kind of compelling as to why that particular store and not the Target store. It's the same congestion, it's the same, every argument applied, except the, the demographic using Walmart is lower income than that of using Target. And we all know that. And, and I'm just curious as to why there wasn't an outcry against both stores instead of just the one.
I mean, I'm a little, I'm a little curious, too. And I, I could see the same, the same thing happening with both the shopping centers being there.
And, you know, the traffic thing is, that's the only way we're going to be able to fix the, I mean, that is a dangerous area, and we really are going to enhance the traffic or the streets and make it far safer when, when the Walmart gets there. Also, this particular Walmart, I'm really kind of proud of how, how we've insisted. It, it's a much more upscale Walmart than we've seen in the past. And I think, once it gets built, people are actually going to be happier with it. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
I appreciate your involvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you.
Michelle Eckbert. He's done, right? Here we talk. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. On September 11th, you adopted an ordinance, Ordinance 981, I believe, for the sex offender. And, which was not in the best interest of the city. It puts the city at greater risk. But, you know, Vice Mayor, then Vice Mayor Ron Smith did not want to hear the actual statistics. Marvin Christie had his objections. Now we find ourselves at an impasse, and Mr. Pelka said something very unique today. He said lawsuits are not always the essential way to resolve problems. They're not. However, on December 18th, you were served, served with a lawsuit, and this afternoon, you were served with the request for the temporary restraining order against it. And now you'll be served here within a week of a lawsuit from me for what happened in trial. I filed a complaint with the Judicial System Integrity Division against you, Mayor, and the City Council in the city.
Against me?
For the false allegation. Hello, we went to, we went to trial, remember, not too long ago?
That's right.
Oh, that's right.
That's what you were threatening, right?
Well, yes. I need to refresh you about that, which cost essentially the, you know, the taxpayers about $1 million for. So anyways, what I'm saying here is, we do not necessarily have to go through lawsuits to resolve an issue. We should be able to sit and talk about the issues that affect the people and the true statistics. Now, I stood here in August and in September and told you, 1.9% of sex offenders have the recidivism right to commit a new sex crime. These recent sex crimes that have been occurring in our city are from new sex offenders that are not on the registry. The State Supreme Court is now hearing the Jessica's Law that George Runner sponsored before the legislature in the State Senate. There's been a few other decisions down the state that have essentially made these ordinances illegal. So I'm asking you, as you go back into the executive session, to think about this. Let us come to the table and talk to you about the sex offender ordinance and what would be in the best interest for the city. That's all I'm asking. It doesn't take a lawsuit, it doesn't have to cost the city money and the taxpayers and take money away from the citizens to do this. That's what I'm asking for, Mayor and City Council.
Michael Reeves.
Mayor Paris, Council, thanks for letting me speak tonight. I wanted to clarify something. Last time we had a meeting, I was one of the two people that opposed the council rescinding support for the State of Arizona's attempt to control illegal immigration in the United States. One council member expressed her experience as a child when her parents were asked for their green card, which I'm sorry, a child had to go through that. Let me state that my support of attempts to control immigration is not based upon skin color or race. I am Native American on both sides of my family. If you ever met my dad or my sister, you would think they came off a movie set, a Western movie set, or just got off the reservation. My grandmother suffered discrimination in Chicago the last century, both because of her gender and her skin color. Her father called her an endearing Native American name because she was so dark. All her life, she wore white makeup to whiten her face. But like my grandparents, I believe in following the rules. I agree that the United States government has been negligent in handling the immigration issue. Instead of arresting people after they entered the United States, the US government should have facilitated their legal documentation and ability to enter the US legally. Having said that, I support efforts to identify those who have been arrested to see if they are here illegally. The honest, law-abiding people have nothing to fear. The lawbreakers should be fearful for good reason, and we should keep them fearful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
So we're going to adjourn to the executive session. I think they want you to. Mr. Mayor, just, I got to read some. We're going to have conference with legal counsel over potential litigation, one case, Government Code Section 54956.9B, and conference with legal counsel over existing litigation, which involves child molesters and group homes and a host of other people that would like to come to our city, and I would prefer they didn't. All right?
The second part of the closed session is under Government Code Section 54956.9A, and concerns the items listed on the agenda.
Oh, and Darlene, I, I remembered what this was about. I think that's excellent. Thank you so much. Actually, they didn't tell me. I figured it out. It's the monkey, the dancing monkey on the Boulevard, right? The organ grinder. She bought it at one of those metal things. She bought it at a church. Let the record note that Mayor Paris isn't with us. City Attorney?
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, the council met in closed session under Government Code Section 54956.9B to discuss potential litigation, one case, gave direction to City Attorney concerning that matter. The council also met in conference, in closed session under Government Code Section 54956.9A with respect to each of the items, well, let me back up, with respect to Doe versus Lancaster and Antelope Valley Allied Arts cases, gave direction to council concerning those cases. The other cases were not discussed. And no further action was taken in closed session.
Thank you. Chair Zadel.
The Housing Authority meeting is adjourned until January 22nd, 2013 at 5:00 PM.
Okay, we're going to adjourn this meeting in the memory of Clarence Corky Prothrow. Mr. Prothrow was a longtime resident of the Valley, owner and operator of Corky's Auto Repair for 40 years. He was well-respected in the community and abroad, having many friends. He was loving husband, father, and grandfather, and will be greatly missed by all of them that loved him. And I knew Corky personally, and he was a great guy, and he worked on cars quite well, so. And the City Council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, January 22nd, 2013, at 5:00.